7, 2024, meeting of the Westbridge Water School Committee. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
A moment of silence? Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and livestreamed on the Westbridge Water Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. I'd like to introduce Mackenzie Craig as our student representative tonight. Welcome, Mackenzie. And after that, we're going to move on to minutes. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the September 11th minutes?
Okay.
Okay. Move to accept the September 11th, 2024 minutes into the record. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Where were you, Mr. Brown?
All right. So a few weeks ago, we got a really awesome email from Special Olympics North America, recognizing Westbridge Water Middle, Senior, High School as an exemplary school within their program. Very, very proud of this accomplishment, Middle, Senior High School staff. How we posted out on our website and sent information out to all of our families. But I really thought it's important to hear from the administrators and coaches of the program. So I'd like them to come up, Mrs. Page, Ms. Hamel, Ms. Maloney, and Ms. Keely, to talk a little bit about what they do and why it's so special here in Westbridge Water.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Jenny Hamel, Nikki Maloney, and Jenny Keely. Really the great work and power behind these Unified Sports, which has been awesome. So I wanted to go ahead, congratulations for being recognized, you're well deserved. Our student athletes, if you ever have the opportunity to come out and watch me, we start botchi, because this is great. But I got to let Jenny, for her, her name.
Well, thank you so much. Yes, it is an absolute pleasure. You know, the Unified Sports was in the making for quite a while before COVID hit, and then finally, after that, you know, had passed, and Nikki Maloney came on board, and Jenny Keely, we were able to kind of dumpster this. So, super proud, and just want to say congratulations to our school for receiving the national banner recognition through Special Olympics North America. Our school was selected from a national certifying body of achieving standards of excellence in the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. The athletes, partners, students, coaches, volunteers, teachers, staff, and administration at Westbridge Water Middle, Senior High School have all played key roles in creating a social climate where everyone feels included and respected for who they are. We are honored to be recognized by the Special Olympics for the hard work and dedication of Christine Page, Kathy Marble, Nikki Maloney, Jenny, Jenny Keely, and so many more. And obviously, they demonstrate daily the continuously grow and grow the strength of our program. We are one in 19 schools in Massachusetts and among 202 schools nationwide to achieve this status for 2023, 2024. Congratulations to Christine, Kathy, Nikki, Jenny, and all of our Unified Student Athletes for your dedication to the Special Olympics. We love our Wildcats, and I have to say, I had a young lady come up to me, this was when the school started, and just expressed how wonderful the program is, and just the love was just so appreciative and beaming, and how this program has really impacted her life here at Westbridge Water. And I couldn't be more proud. And happy to, I want to say, Nikki and I are actually going this Friday, let me get this correct. We are, we've been asked to sit on the panel at the Unified Champion Schools Conference this Friday to discuss the success that we've had with our middle school Unified Sports and Unified PE. So certainly looking to share that inspiration. And again, I'm so proud, and I'm just happy and proud to be a part of it with all these wonderful people and our student athletes here, all of us. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our season though starts tomorrow, we have the A.M.S. Saturday next week, and we are hosting our Unified Botchi Jamboree on November 4th, Monday, up here at Middle, Senior High School. We'd love to have people come out and support our students that are working in art this year. So we'd love to have, you know, some community support, concessions, and hopefully some T-shirts for sale. Oh, and yeah, Jenny, something else.
This month, the Coffee Card Program finally started at Middle, Senior High School on Friday, and we had a lot of teachers come out, and we really supported them. Had over 30 orders, which is great for Thursday. I started the Howard on Friday for our next Coffee Card Venture, and I'm very excited for the program to take off.
I just want to say thank you. And Ms. Hamel, you mentioned it, but you know, not only our student athletes who are excelling and love the program, but our families do and our student body as well. So it's really, it's something special to see the competition, the fun, the collaboration, and the genuine care for one another when they're out there. So it's a unique, special program, and thank you for all you do for Westbridge Water.
You got it. Welcome anytime. It's awesome. You're very, very.
Congratulations. It's impressive. You haven't been doing it too long. You just got the program off the ground, so it's impressive, and we're proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
All right. Superintendent's update.
Continue on. Okay. I'll start with an MSBA update. So as you can see, I won't go through all of them, but we have had a lot of recent events and/or meetings, including some school tours that we've done as part of the visioning group, meetings with selective groups, people who have really been influential in terms of getting information to our OPM and to our architect, all information needed and required to move forward in the process. We've had full school building committee meetings, and we ended last week with a real exciting all-day visioning session, which I think we had about 35 people in this room, educators, administrators, classroom teachers, related services, nurses, and a lot of community members as well. So I think it was well received. Our educational consultants did a great job. Our architects and our project managers were here as well. But I didn't know if Ms. Lazardi wanted to say anything about your participation.
Sure, yeah. I think it was a great experience. I was really pleased I was able to be a part of it. I think the collaboration amongst the educators and administration and the parents and community members really, I think everyone started off on very different pages and very different expectations, and I think by the end, it was a pretty good consensus of what we'd like to see for the future of our new elementary school. So I'm looking forward to the next steps.
Yeah. And we talked a lot about what the vision is, and what do we see, what do we have now, what do we look towards the future? And they were very, they held us back for the longest time by talking about spaces. We, everyone wanted to talk about what's it going to look like? But the important part is what's, why is it going to look that way? And I think that was really important, and I think that's going to help drive right our educational plan and also drive, you know, for the best building possible. So that's in the past. So upcoming, we also have a lot of events coming up. We have a full building committee meeting tomorrow night. We have a rescheduled kickoff meeting with the MSBA that's really the kickoff into feasibility. We'll have many more visioning workshops and meetings to kind of fine-tune our educational plan. And I think the goal is that when we get to the end of this, that we have all the data, all the information to move forward in the best, best way possible. So we will have a draft of our educational plan, hopefully by the end of this month, the end of October, and then we'll submit that in middle of December, I believe the 20th, but that date may be a little bit up in the air. But that's when we're going to submit our preliminary design program to the MSBA. Then we'll enter into preferred schematic design and to complete the report, that's going to take about four additional months. And then May 2025 to October 2025, about six more months of schematic design. That's when we'll be fine-tuning location, grade configurations, and everything that goes into it. And the school building committee will be very instrumental in that, and that's why I'm really happy we have a very well-rounded committee. In the interim, we'll also be having community forums, so there'll be a lot of information presented to the community, a lot of opportunity to ask questions, a lot of opportunity for school building community members, along with our architects, along with our OPM, to provide information out. The goal is that there are no questions in the end. We want to provide everything, so we're answering all questions. They are working on a new website. They'll take information from our current website. We will host FAQs, documents, as well as additional information as it becomes available. And then everyone's asking, when will this go to town? The town, the estimate is sometime in the winter of 2025, so probably December 2025, or possibly into January of '26. So there's a lot that goes into this next year plus. And just so people are aware, you know, we're looking at sites right now, we'll talk more about that tomorrow night at the meeting, but we're really looking at four enrollment options. The MSBA mandates that we look at just replacing the Roseell McDonald's, so that would be grades one to three, and you'll see that they also have given us an estimate or an enrollment number. Each of the enrollment numbers are right around 150, some are a little bit more than that. The next option will be looking at enrollment K to four, so that'll be taking the Spring Street School and Howard along with Roseell, but Howard would just take in grade four. Howard School, as it's currently built, really can't support three grades, so that would leave the Howard School as a five, six school. The third option would be one, grades one to six. That would consolidate Howard and Roseell, leaving Spring Street as your early childhood center. And then the final option would be all three schools combined. So for options two and four, it would also include our preschool, which we're estimating around 75 students. So, and those options, you would add an additional 75. Again, these are numbers that were given to us through the enrollment studies we did with the MSBA.
Thank you. A lot of work has been done, a lot of work still to be done.
It's certainly exciting, and there's a lot going on. And I thank our administrators too, who are very much deeply involved in this. The REEDS Quarterly Report should be in your packet, just an update, and we are obligated to provide you with that for your information. Something that we have done, we did last year, and we're looking to do this year, is to continue having budget meetings with the town. We're targeting this month and most likely January, and then in March, we'll have our traditional meetings with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. In the past, we've, the people participating have been myself, the business manager, our school committee budget subcommittee members, a Board of Selectmen representative, and Finance Committee representative. I noticed I left off the town administrator, so he will also be there. And really, the goal is to share all relevant information with the group, to form a better understanding of the school's budget, our needs, and have, you know, in-depth, or sometimes it's just, just sharing information about what needs we have within the district. I always say that our story really doesn't change. There are certain things that we have needs. We've been fortunate to get some of those needs met over the years, middle, senior, high school, mental health, some additional EL staff, but numbers still continue to grow. So we'll look at areas that we have, hopefully are good with numbers, and look to potentially add in other areas as the needs present themselves. And listed here are my goals. Tonight, I'm recommending a fourth goal, so I'm not going to go through the first three goals, but the fourth goal has to do with, it's a district improvement goal, and has to do with creating a culture of belonging. So the goal is, by May 2025, identify two, identify all areas of strength and two areas for growth in a district related to strengthening our culture of belonging and to share these with the school community. So there's a lot that we're doing. I think the important part is to gather, what are we doing well, and what areas do we have for possible improvement or growth in the future? So some of the areas that we will focus on are looking at our walkthrough template. We'll be doing that this week to make sure we're integrating culture responsive criteria into that walkthrough template. We've already worked on our professional development plan for the year, and we have cultural responsive professional development sessions within that plan. Sharing out information with families at least twice during the year about addressing hate and bias in schools. We recently posted information out on the website and sent out to families. Conducting quarterly check-ins with the building administrators on creating and developing appropriate PBIS systems in each of the buildings. I'll be checking in with administrators and reviewing our SEL teams at each building. Each building has an SEL team that functions very well within the school, comes up with some wonderful ideas to implement things within each of the schools. We are looking to conduct monthly check-ins at the elementary level with RMK, Raising Multicultural Kids. That does start a little bit later, so a little bit later timeline for that. Looking to, well, we're not applying this year for the Playbook Initiative, but what we're planning on doing for that is visiting some schools that have the Playbook Initiative that goes along with Project 351, which is, it's an anti-discrimination and bias prevention program. So as we gather more information and make sure it meets the needs of our kids, we would look to apply for that next year. We have used a lot of professional development through the Mass Partnership for Youth with a focus on culture of belonging and SEL, so making sure we're putting that information out to our staff, looking at Wildcat pride core values, and integrating those into our student programs within the schools, and working with the Director of Curriculum to focus with our consultants that we're currently using, to make sure what we're doing with the consultants is going back into the classroom. So again, it's been a goal of mine, that, you know, making sure we have a strong culture of belonging, but I think it's important to kind of solidify it in a goal.
I agree, and I appreciate you adding it. I know SEL is kind of a moving target, and the change, the needs change every year, so I do think we have a lot of growth to do, so I appreciate you adding it as one of your goals. I noticed you don't have surveys, but I imagine you have those under goal number one.
Correct.
So there's an overlap there, that some of that, you know, cultural and SEL-related items will be on that.
Yes, it will.
Okay. We do have to vote to accept this, but does anyone have any other questions before we do that?
Yeah.
No?
Are there any professional development opportunities this year scheduled for the subjects mentioned?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, a few.
Great.
Okay. Move to approve Mr. Bodwell's fourth goal, in addition to the three that we've already approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. Okay, moving on to the student representative update. Mackenzie.
At Westbridge Water School, this school is a much fun, lively, exploring, and new learning environment. Thank you to the services here, for those. One amazing feature of the school is the two-way contact. Students can go back into the water and totally return as well on and off to your water. I've been in the water for the first time. Speaking to SC Math in Harwood. SC Math is an interactive, computer-based math program that helps students learn math and design equations. Instead of relying on physical math problems, SC Math uses virtual problems to help to use your current math content. SC Math is designed to further deeper understanding of math, offering students to be competent in both their math skills and step-by-step. Since its self-care students can work at their own speed, and students can monitor their progress to create far-reaching. Martin Cavendish and our fall sports team are involved, all during their time. Stories, playing games, and running to the center, showing the school's most important skills. It's wonderful to see the oldest communities of school or students interacting in building passions and learning about the school. Do you believe that developing to in social and environmental skill is just as important as a avenue? In September, we focused on being of passion, helping students to, the logistics and research. Through the constant sessions, students explore the meaning of passion, reflecting on how their unique interests and behaviors change their goals. Throughout the summer, students engage in discussions about the meaning of respect. These conversations foster respect, and provide support to help students demonstrate respect and equality. We're asked for the first usable reading incentive program, Falling for Reading. This reading challenge is designed to promote the enjoyment of reading and encourage daily practice. We would like to see every oral visitor at least one reading range school each day to show that they're reading independently, listening to reading and practicing it. Our reading flows and work are currently being led to display our readers' power. We hope to develop a forest trees. Smoker lighting opportunities are closely at our office. What walking counseling enables students by reading partners utilizing flexible seating and standing options, and working closely with teachers guided by instructional assistance. This approach ensures that every student places support and needs to succeed. At Howard, students at the Howard School, recently celebrated the ways they give, and service back in September, quite beautiful. Fourth grade is allowing them to read an inclusive, positive poem. A fifth grade shared their thoughts on demonstrating respect for the community environment through other communities. The sixth grade student showed four essays. A seventh grade student shared a special presentation about how respect is shown in the community. Howard tried something, culminated in announcing, announcing the end of our PBIS project. PBIS stands for audio video assist incentive system. Most students demonstrate their 20 days of enthusiasm. They have their entries into rapports and a variety of prizes, including books, a special and an extra recess. The prize fee for October is a termination or access to the 78th of October 2024. Students are granted access to the SC Math competition. Each week, five students, a 60-pound bull or 120-pound bull is given away for work. Will earn a pumpkin for the beauty of pumpkin patch. If last and insert the latest pumpkin patch by November 22nd, will win a prize. While SC Math is the build-up game of real learning. Our pumpkin patch agreement, which are, thanks to Amy, Amy Winters, the local teacher, and her volunteers, 54 students have had opportunities to volunteer at the pumpkin patch. Students volunteer farm and then engage various sports, and working nights with the baby apples. Students are able to help socialize the baby apples. The jury is still out about whether or not to handle what you put in. The Westbridge Water Middle School is about to announce that six students were selected and will perform at the Royal City University as part of the DSU Central Honor Band on Thursday, October 10th, 2024. These students will present a Westbridge Water Honor Band, which is made up of nominated students in the area. Congratulations to all the outstanding students. The other heroes, Julia, Ella, Jeanne, Kiarra, Marley, and Casey, Emily, and Kendra. The first annual Fall Duck Event was a, was a hot topic. Student athletes and friends were invited and commissioned by the school, and followed by the duck distribution. It was a great event to, like, have qualified workers and sportswear. School counselors and faculty now putting together careers as college fair for students. Luckily, 155 colleges, universities, businesses, and military branches named over the Westbridge Water, to contribute to. Students have the opportunity to speak with questions and to ask questions in the sense that work through school and career well.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, moving on to business. We do have a revised warrant. Last month, when I read the numbers, there was a small typo, so I'm just going to, I'm not going to read all of the numbers again, I'm just going to draw your attention in the, in your packet, there's a PDF called the September 9th warrant, and you can see it's highlighted in yellow. So there was a payroll warrant for the fiscal year '25 on August 16th, 2024, and that was in total of $511,651.08. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the Selectmen's Office for review. All right, moving on to the donations subcommittee. Mrs. Mysowski.
Hi. So in the packet also, there was a list of donations that's been received to the Westbridge Water School System from September 24th to today. So we need to vote on these items that, and so we can accept them. So I'm just going to read, we have, we have five. So first one is a donation from the PTO of School Supplies, Back to School, for the kindergarten class. We have school supplies donated by Molly Smith, another donation of Back to School that was just heard throughout the district. We have more school supplies that was donated by the Lions Club, more donations to the Back to School, and that was just moved to the Howard School, and teachers gave them to the students. We also had a nice donation from Paula Bunker in Janfords of school supplies, which included some Sharpies, notebooks, pens, pencils, highlighters, and racers. And the last was a donation from Linda Sanity of Sharpies, notebooks, pencils, pens, highlighters, and racers, and blinders. So I would like to make a motion to accept these donations.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to thank all of the people that did all the work to gather these donations and bring them to our schools. Every dollar counts.
Yeah, this is fantastic.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, we have the elementary and middle, senior high school handbooks. I know that we needed to have those revised from last month. Do we have someone that just can go over quickly what was changed?
So I think we, all the policies have been updated in the handbook, so they're, I believe they are now going back to the school committee policies. So when they're updated now, these will also be reflected in the, in the handbooks.
Perfect. And those are all policies from last month, so they should be all up to date, and the handbook should be up to date as well.
Yes.
Move to accept the elementary and middle, senior high school handbooks as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. From there, we have the MAS-C, MAS-S Official Delegate Form. So in order for our school committee to have a vote at the annual business meeting of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, it is necessary that an official delegate be designated in pursuant of Article 9, Section 6 of the bylaws. I am just going to read Article 9, Section 6 very quickly. "All members of the association and all members of school committees which are active members of the association may attend and speak at any meetings of the association. Only active members shall be entitled to vote on the election of officers or on any other matter as to which members of the association shall have the right to vote, and each active member shall have one vote. No later than seven days prior to each meeting of the association, each active member shall, by written notice to the executive director, designate one of its members as its voting delegate, and may, by such notice, designate one of its members as its alternate voting delegate. All ballots and other votes cast by an active member of any meeting of the association shall be cast by, and only by its voting delegate, or if the delegate be absent, by its alternate voting delegate if one shall have been designated." So I know Mrs. Lazardi will be attending on our behalf, so I would like to, all right, move to elect Mrs. Lazardi as our primary voting delegate, and I guess myself as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Are you planning on attending?
If she cannot, I will. If she comes, comes down with some illness, I can, but it's not, I'm not planning on attending this year.
I know it's been tough to get there.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. From there, we have the middle, senior high school out-of-state field trip. Mrs. Page.
John Mayo, advisor, and advocate, who organizes our international travel groups that go. I'm hoping to do an out-of-state field trip to the province, performing at Center for viewing of Hamilton. They are, it'll also be the drama club students and those who have traveled abroad, you know, in order to keep the cost, you know, minimal, if we appropriate seats, so it'll fit it up, to more students if we need. The, I believe, according to the Common Sense Media, Broadway.com, play is appropriate for ages 11 and up, so we are going to offer to grade seven. So we just need to move over to out-of-state. It's going to be a Tuesday, December 17th. It is an after-school, they tried to give a date, so it is after-school hours, moving to graduation. It may be tied on Wednesday, but it'll be well worth it.
All right, move to accept this request for an out-of-state field trip to see Hamilton. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I do, I'm curious, how many tickets do we have, or do we anticipate having, do we know?
It keeps happening, but I'm not sure.
That's great.
It's limited, it's not unlimited, but we'll try and take as many as we can.
That's great. Any other discussion?
Sounds like fun, I hope you have a good time.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw Hamilton this summer, and I'm going to be honest, it's probably the first time in my entire life that I understood American history a little bit, so it's a great opportunity. It is, it's very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, the WBC PAC update. Mr. Schmier.
The mission of Westbridge Water's Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s, and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy, and opportunities for education and community building. The WBC PAC held its first meeting last month, and attendance was at an all-time high. We were excited to see all of the new faces who joined us to discuss current issues and share ideas for the direction of our year. For those who missed it or want to get involved, minutes were shared on our mailing list later in the month. Our next meeting is here in the Middle, Senior, High School Learning Commons on October 15th at 6:00 PM. And as a reminder, all are welcome to attend. We'll be hosting our final information table at the Spring Street Curriculum Night this Thursday, October 10th. Please stop by to meet WBC PAC board members, ask questions, learn more about us, and join our mailing list to keep up to date on CPAC matters. We're excited to welcome back Christine Riley from Cape Cod Advocate for our first workshop of the year, Basic Rights in Your Child's IEP. With the new IEP rolling out this year, we encourage caregivers to attend so that they may gain better understanding of the special education process, and how to read, understand, and contribute to their child's IEP. This workshop will be held virtually by Zoom on Tuesday, October 29th. However, the WBC PAC will be hosting a viewing and collaboration session here in the Middle, Senior, High School Learning Commons during the workshop. In the words of Verna Myers, "Diversity is being invited to the party, inclusion is being asked to dance." For more information about the WBC PAC and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA, or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you, Dave. It was very exciting to point out something that Dave said, our attendance at our last meeting was up significantly, which was really nice to see more community members and more parents get involved in the CPAC.
And some of the members that joined us for the first time were able to join the visioning session, session for the school building committee, which is good, we could get input from more families into the process of building a new school.
Yeah, it's very exciting. Okay, moving on to the discussion and approval of policies. Move to adopt the following policies as written. BHC, School Committee Staff Communications. BIA, New School Committee Member Orientation. BIBA, School Committee Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops. BID, School Committee Member Compensation and Expenses. BJ, School Committee Legislative Program. CCB, Staff Relations. CE, Administrative Councils, Cabinets, and Committees. CH, Policy Implementation. CHD, Administration and Policy Absence. CM, School District Annual Report. And ACGB, Title IX Sexual Discrimination Grievance Procedure. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Sure, so the only one I'm going to comment on, so 10 of the policies didn't, had no changes, there was maybe a tiny edit on one. The one I want to mention is ACGB, Title IX Sexual Discrimination Grievance Procedure. We've had added the recommendations to the policy as it relates to the areas of the decision-maker, the appeal officer, and the IR facilitator, so those roles were added. That's good.
Any other discussion? Any questions? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, move to adopt the policy new as written, BK, School Committee Memberships. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion on that one?
Yep, so this one's new, as you said, and mainly, the main point of this one is that the committees authorized to maintain memberships in various school board associations and other educational organizations with the intention of actively participating in their activities and effectively utilizing the resources and benefits from these memberships for the advantage of the committee and staff.
All right, any other questions on that one? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to policies to open. Move to open the following policies to review at next month's meetings. BBBA/BBBB, School Committee Member Qualifications/Oath of Office. BBBC, School Committee Member Resignation. BBBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. BCA, School Committee Member Ethics. BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting. BDB, Distribution of Diplomas at High School Graduation. BDC, School Committee Officers. BDD, School Committee Superintendent Relationship. BEE, Special Procedures for Conducting Hearings. BG, School Committee Policy Development. BGB, Policy Adoption. BGC, Policy Revision and Review. BGE, Policy Dissemination. And BGF, Suspension of Policies. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Working our way through the Bs. We will be done with the Bs after this.
Yeah, we'll round it up for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to warrants. Hold on just a moment, make sure I get this open. Okay, the following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2025. Bill warrants, September 5th, 2024, for $234,496.81. September 19th, 2024, for $125,104.26. September 26th, 2024, for $94,294.54. The following two payroll warrants for fiscal year 25, September 13th, 2024, for $574,240.73. And September 27th, 2024, for $596,265.66. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the Selectment's office for review. Okay, public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes, and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the calendar. Our next regular school committee date is November 4th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, here in the Middle, Senior, High School Learning Commons. And for all additional events in the district, refer to the district newsletters and the website, we've got a lot going on. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.